It's six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If you have a comment, please come to the podiums, date, your name and address. Express your comments to the board and onto the public, and you have three minutes. All set? All right, next order of business. It's a public hearing for a barn easement for Katie Ranor and Drew Cross. So I officially open up the public hearing. Does anybody like to speak to us?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. Could you first tell us what it is that is going to be the motion? Because you've got two different numbers there, you know that, 25% or 75%?
It's 75% reduction in... I'll read the motion, but I won't make it, about that. Move to approve the Katie Ranor and Drew Cross application for a discretionary preservation easement on the barn for a 10-year term and a 75% reduction in the assessed value.
So the financial information is the one that's in error?
Yes. So really, the taxes, as far as I understand, are $1,274.96. If this is approved, the taxes for that particular part of the structure or that structure is going to be $318.74. Anybody wish to speak to it, against it? Anything from the board? Okay. So now I will make a motion to approve Katie Ranor and Drew Cross' application for a discretionary preservation easement on the barn for a 10-year term and a 75% reduction in assessed value. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the board? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes. I officially close the hearing. Next order of business, appointments.
Thank you.
So we're here for the Trails Committee, Martin Dartford, Nine Ranger Drive. We've got two donations that people would like to make to the trails in town. We're looking for approval to accept those. One is for a bench in the Mark Jones Memorial Forest over there where the Boulder Trail that we opened up this last year. One of the people that walks the trails at a regular basis wants to donate the money to build a bench over there. So it'd be for the bench, a chain and a lock to secure it and anchors. And so the donation's about $100 for that. The other donation is for Scott and Gail Kemp. Kemp's Sawmill on Cartland Road is donating wood for our kiosks that we're building for the trailheads. And it's about a $300 valuation for that. And we're building those up as part of the information to go into the different trailheads, modernize the ones that are out there. So we're looking for approval from the select board for accepting those two donations and the gratitude of people that are willing to contribute to the town.
Aaron, who's the $100 from?
The last name is Hutchinson. Was it William? No, no, no. I have to look.
Okay, just...
It's a...
It's a private individual.
It's a private individual, right, yeah. I can get you the name. I know, I remember the last name was Hutchinson, but I have to look at minutes who were up in the meeting, still, what the first name was.
Any questions?
I'd like to offer our thanks. Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah. Any thoughts? Are you... So that's just one and two. How about number three? Are you dealing with...
Why don't we do two and get those taken care of, and then...
Okay, well, I don't know if he's done.
What's that?
Are you done with the first two?
Yeah, I'm done with the first two.
All right. So I make a motion to accept the $100 donation from the Hutchinsons for a bench for the Mark Jones Memorial Forest, and a donation of $300 for the wood from Scott and Jenna Kemp for wood for the kiosks. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes.
Thank you. The other item that we're here for is in the Little River Park, the ridge trail that goes up around the upper section of the park, which is in the recreational land. We're looking, at current time, it's just a small loop there, so it's kind of a dead-end trail. And we've had problems with people cutting down over the embankment of the sand pit there, roding away. We did a work session where we cut some brush and put down over that area to try to block it off. But we'd like to make that ridge trail into something that is a complete loop so that people, it's more entertaining for people to use and come down through there. We've done some scouting where we're blocking off the trail up there. We scattered out that we can come across the gradient on the face of the embankment there and do one switchback to bring us down to the playing field where there's kind of a trail along the edge there and do that without causing erosion and be much better use of that trail up around there and allow people to tie into the other areas. So we're asking for permission to cut a new trail through there. We've done a little bit of looking through that area already and have kind of a good idea that we can come down through there without causing erosion problems. So we're looking for approval for a new trail to extend the ridge trail and then Little River Park down into the play area.
So is the extension this black kind of...
That's that black line that's on there, right?
Is that what's this black?
And then the cross-black line here is kind of an existing path that's already there. And then this green trail down here is a trail that's down in the conservation land. So eventually, that trail would probably tie in on down into that area.
You're so close to that loop, to the final loop.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So we're just trying to make the whole thing as a more continuous loop through there.
So you're coming from a very high elevation to a lower one, so what are you gonna, you're gonna have like different steps or...
So if we, if we cut from where the loop is and the way that cuts back in here, there's actually a fairly gentle gradient across there where they had to smooth it off. So we're coming back across that face, and then we'll have one switchback to come on back down. So we're using the grade to, that is there. At the end of the loop here, it drops right off. But back along the side of the trail, it's a more gradual slant coming back into there.
I know you've been looking at this for a long time, this is exciting that you can do it safely.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions? Elsa?
That's great.
So it sounds fine. So... So we're doing something on a town lane, so I move that we give the Conservation Commission and the Trails Committee permission to extend the ridge trail down to the river trail?
Well, yeah.
The ridge trail's...
It's also, this is going through the recreation land, so, and Deb has already talked to Karen Rossi and the Recreation Committee, so it's also a recreation area through there.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
It's great news.
Dan Tappin, from the Conservation Commission.
The attachment had the full plan, I'm just gonna go through the highlights of it again. Glossy Buckthorn is a non-native woody invasive plant, which is well-established at the Lamprey River canoe launch. And it's on a narrow 0.65 acre strip of town-owned land. The goal is to remove glossy buckthorn and other non-native invasives in order to prevent the spread of invasives in the river corridor and to promote the growth of native plants, which provide wildlife habitat, shade and erosion control in the shoreline zone. No herbicides will be used, control will be by manual methods only. Initial removal will concentrate on the berry-producing buckthorn plants on site, which are 1 to 2 inches in diameter and roughly 8 to 10 feet tall. It will take multiple years to bring the invasives on this site under control. The buckthorns will be cut and prevented from sprouting by covering the stumps with buckthorn baggies, which is a trademark, trade-named product, or a homemade version of a piece of heavy-duty black plastic cinched in at the base with cable ties. The cover remains in place until the stump rots in a year or two, and then the covers are removed. Seedlings and small plants will be pulled by hand or with hand tools. Minimal soil disturbance will occur using these methods. The invasives will be removed from the site or chipped and spread on site. Work is planned to begin in late March or early April, depending on site conditions. Work will be conducted by the Conservation Commission and volunteers working directly under the commission. The public will be informed about the project through onsite signs such as Habitat Restoration Work in Progress, articles in the Lee E. Crier and the commission Facebook page. Information will also be provided to L-RAC for them to post. This project was approved by the Lee Conservation Commission and L-RAC at their meetings on February 21st, 2023. The town zoning administrator and DES were contacted regarding the need for a shoreline permit. No permits are required. Karen Rossi stated that the proposed work isn't allowed use. The DES shoreline supervisor stated that an exemption is allowed as long as any cleared area over 10 square feet is replanted. Any questions?
I was just gonna ask about the replanting, so you're gonna make these empty spaces, what's gonna go in?
Yeah, we're not really making empty spaces. The site is incredibly well-vegetated with native plants of all sorts. The attachment had a list of the ones found on preliminary investigation. So it will simply be cutting the trees and...
So what he said, is it because it's smaller than the amount he just stated? Or you're just saying because there's so many other things there?
There's so many other things there. It is unlikely that we are, the point is not to clear the site. The point is to remove the invasive plants.
Perfect.
And plants are, the invasives are scattered throughout the site. They seem to be especially concentrated right around the canoe launch itself.
Okay.
But, no, we're, I think it's very doubtful we're going to clear anything like 10 square feet.
I just misunderstood that sentence.
No, but, good question.
Any other questions? Only one thing I'd ask is when you have volunteers that aren't associated with the town, that you fill out one of our forms so they're covered for our liability in case they fall in the water or hurt themselves or...
Absolutely.
We can tell. Anything else? No? So move to approve a multi-year project to control glossy buckthorn and other invasive plants on the Lamprey River canoe launch parcel according to the plan presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is regular business. The Assistant Town Administrator, please.
So Erin approached me again this year to do the flags in time for the Newland Donor Services National Donate for Life Month in April. Seems this has become a standard thing now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Great.
Once again, she'll provide all the flags and this will be, hmm, I don't know. Usually it's Bill that puts them up, but I'm not sure. He's getting closer to...
Somebody will put it up?
So somebody in Steve's regime will do it.
Regime, interesting.
Any questions?
I think it's great.
Yeah, no?
Okay, I move to approve hanging donate-for-life flags provided by the Lincoln Donor Services via Erin Conchino for the full month of April on an already established bike pole within the sound of league. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next few things are some updates on the hiring of some new employees. The clerk's office has made a decision and has offered the Assistant Town Clerk, Town Clerk, Tax Collective position to Georgia Gutor. She will be starting on March 20th. And at some point this year, you know, she'll be going to the training and everything and at some point becoming, you know, deputy to Liz.
That's great.
So that went rather smoothly and rather quickly. They had a good response, because you have to live in league.
Yeah.
So...
Limited pool, that sounds great.
We've all met her, she's very nice. And then the building maintenance person that will be taking over Bill, the part-time maintenance supervisor person, is David Devenish. And he's actually starting tomorrow. So he's starting in Steve's department and working up to 32 hours a week, part-time. And he has, he comes with a lot of experience. He's a ex-firefighter, actually, out of Newbury Port, I believe.
That's great.
And he has experience with, he's a CDL driver, so, and he's driven the big winged, winged plow truck. And he knows how to drive the large, the dump truck that goes to waste management.
Oh.
Big weight, so he knows how to do that. So he seemed like a good fit.
That's great.
Yeah. He's nice, he's quiet.
Would you like to be a part-time firefighter?
I know, right?
Part-time plow driver, I mean, we have a lot of options for him.
I know, we have a lot. Yeah, he'll be head-up for all of us, that's amazing.
That's great, he sounds like he'll fit right in.
And so that's it. Do you have a bookkeeper? Well, I'll talk about her later.
Okay. All right, so we're skipping that. Still working on that, check.
Anything else?
And that's it for me.
Anything on the consent agenda that you want to talk about? No? So I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that an aye?
Aye, yes, aye. Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
This is just for you, isn't it? I think the person's just... I did hear Denise, a compliment to you about having put everything onto Indeed and getting a lot more people applying, so...
Nice job, great job.
Yeah, this is a great time.
It's awesome. It's just nice to have that.
You gonna switch? Oh, well, that was weird.
I know, right?
You complained, Denise, it's Hurst.
Just, I said he's not gonna leave, no, we're his name, my name is Hurst.
Is this the... Have we heard that from him with a corrected...
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Letter? Is that an Andy question?
Yeah.
He was gonna talk to them because there were quite a few things in their letter report that were clearly inaccurate, I can sort of read the back. Not in the back yet, okay.
So do you need a second government signature? There's two spaces. Do we, do we wanna do it and then, but we'll still, let's go find out, okay?
It was like, I haven't seen...
Oh, maybe.
I don't know, I'm not perceived. I think that's what happened. I, I don't know, what do you think?
You are the expert on these things, I'm gonna let you tell me what we need to do. It seems we're kind of like two spaces.
What's that?
Yes.
Old business, can we talk about the cane in old business?
Oh, yeah, sure. Did you bring it?
It's right there.
It's right there.
Oh!
How did you miss it?
I'm a little busy, I wanted to go, I'm gonna take it. Looks amazing. I love it. So the idea was just put it here instead of having it in the way of the home?
Well, that...
Denise will explain.
Okay.
Dave just went rogue and decided to present that because he's not able with his machine to put it on the side.
Okay.
So, and I haven't spoken to the other, the one other person that I have a name for. I haven't hooked up with him yet about whether he would be able to do that. So we're gonna still chase that down. However, we do have a date of March 18th, I think it's something I don't know if you, that they would like to do that for.
That's great.
So that's coming up pretty quick, so... I had it on my desk all day to call those people and that person, and I just, yeah.
Living in an entire town yourself is too much?
So, I'm just kidding.
Single living?
I will call him first thing tomorrow and have, and see if he's able to do something like that.
I'd say if they're not, this seems like a nice alternative.
I just, I just wanna say this, I don't know that everyone wants to have their personal information on a cane if they're in the back. I'm not sure, this isn't a better choice.
Yeah, it's up to you guys, I mean, it's nice.
There's no reason, I mean, I guess lost or whatever, but like, the cane is special, and it's in a holder, it has a name.
It's up to...
I suppose we could ask, they used to do that. Up until probably, what, 30 years ago, something like that?
Did they stop?
I do not know.
Okay.
I was not doing this 30 years ago, so...
They used to do which one?
They used to put it on the cane.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I've only seen that one time.
So the thing is, if they didn't want it on the cane, we could just ask them.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we could just give them the, yeah, see if the guy can do it, and then give them the option of this, or on the cane, or none of the above.
Because the thing is, if you think about posterity-wise, you get a cane, there's nothing really on it.
Yeah.
Well, this was great grandma's, and, well, who was she and when was this?
With the holder that it comes with, it's cool.
It's possible to.
Yeah.
But something can ask. I think maybe when we get somebody, we just ask them, what would you like?
I agree.
I can ask, that's enough, yeah, they might want.
But the thing is, it'd be nice to find out somebody that could put it on the cane, or somebody chooses that.
Exactly.
And then you give people an option and say, oh, sorry, you chose on the cane, and we can't do that.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
That's not good, so...
We always have the backup, hard-to-hold, uncomfortable metal one. It seems to be real hit.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
That's what we were doing before, right?
So 18th, we all showing up, what do we...
I, that's a Saturday.
That's a Saturday.
I will do my best.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm planning to, unless something ever, I don't know.
At least maybe two of us.
I'll do my best.
We'll just say, we have, we showed up, but a third person didn't.
Oh, I'm gonna miss that.
Third person has a glitter hose.
Oh, okay, okay, that's a good reason. Just kidding, just kidding.
Okay.
All right, so, and it's, I don't remember, is it here? It's here.
It's answered, yeah.
Are we having...
At what time did I say?
I don't remember, I'm gonna dial.
Are we having something? And there's it.
The family is having...
That's it?
We're just coming as...
One.
Aside.
Okay, all right, great.
It's Daring Beauty and the Beast at the high school, so if you don't wanna come to this, you can go watch that.
You getting us free tickets, or what do you...
I have to pay for tickets, are you kidding me? My daughter choreographed it.
Oh, really? Cool. All right, anything else in old business? No? New business, can we talk about the mailbox issue?
Yes. I have two other new things after that, too.
Okay.
Great.
Thoughts?
So I looked at it pretty deeply, and I haven't gone into depth into the actual regular policy. But it seems like we have a pretty good policy in place on how we handle situations. The best solution, it seems to this, is for the mailbox to be raised. And going forward, if there's a problem after that, when it's the appropriate height and everything, and then, then we can offer. But one thing that we should, one thing I was saying is that whenever the fall comes around, that it's about to be snow season, we always talk about Jessica's Law, that police do a great job of letting people know about that. I think it'd be really smart in fall for us to do a little campaign and just let people know a little bit about the policies, because I don't think I understood as well until today, and really got it explained, what it entails, like, your mailbox, I think a lot of people feel like that belongs almost to the post office, and it doesn't, it belongs to you. You're responsible to maintain it, if there's rotten wood, it's more likely to fall off, that's your responsibility. But you have to have it within a certain setback and certain measurements, and a large portion of our mailboxes are not, which means they're not our responsibility. So if we let the town know, hey, snow's coming, if you're not 42 to 46 inches, I think it is, off the road, figure out, you know, how to get that higher, if you're, you know, check your mailbox, make sure everything is, the screws are not rusted and there's not rotten parts. And then the other thing is, if we did hit something, it's not really reasonable if somebody has a, you know, $1,000 granite post with like gold embroidery. That's a choice they put in an area that is possible to be hit. We can't replace that. We can replace the value of a typical mailbox, you know, the stand if it gets broken, or the mailbox, that's about $35 or something like that. So we might wanna think about having a, having that more set in stone, the dollar value that we're willing to replace. And that way someone can knowingly say, do I wanna put a granite post out if I am gonna be the one who's responsible if it gets hit? That's different. But having the knowledge and just letting it be out there. A lot of times people have a mailbox if it gets hit in the winter, we can't help them replace it right now. You know, that particular one, we could give them a temporary one. But they can't get into the ground, but in the spring, we could do that. But a lot of people go ahead and they just like stick it back in the ground, and then they don't let us know in the spring, and then it's still loose, and then it happens again. So there's just a lot of information I think we could share with the public.
Just, I apologize, just for the people in the audience and the people listening. A resident complained because they said that one of our snowplows hit their particular mailbox. So they're not very happy about that, so that's what we're talking about. This has happened before, probably will happen again, but... And I know at some point, Denise, I don't know if you can remember, in terms of, because Steve put something in the inquiry about this whole subject. Because the big issue is that people think their mailbox out there, that's on my property, and it's not, usually.
Right, it's in the right way.
So, and one of the things that I remember Steve complaining about is people who put up the granite posts. They put them too close, and when the plow hits it...
They're mad.
Well, it breaks down equipment, too.
Yeah, exactly.
We could dig up that, or a clone, but again...
Yeah, and I think, I think right before the snow, too, when people are thinking about it, thinking with the snowplows, it's a great time, just kinda annually to, you know, just a quick check, something you can think about. It doesn't have to be long, just make sure you're, you know, go check your mailboxes at this and this, and just make sure it's in good shape.
The other thing I found interesting is Mr. Bullock said that that particular section of road, the town Durham also plows that.
Right, so we don't know which hits her by who.
Was it us or them, but either way, the people should, this particular mailbox is too low, is too close to the roads.
And we did acknowledge that, that we do know what the hit, that was ours. We just don't know about the other ones.
So officially, what do we, would we like to have the town administrator contact this resident to explain all this stuff?
Yeah, and let them know that if they raise their mailbox, that, you know, if anything happens in the future, when it's at the appropriate height.
I thought the only place it'd be backed over was what, was that I got a buddy now?
Yeah.
So we'd be willing to hear complaints if it wasn't the appropriate.
Correct, his discretion is what it, yeah.
So Denise, can you ask, when Andy returns, to make a contact, unless you would like to do it, contact this person and also provide them information in terms of the RSA, in terms of, you know, if they'll raise their mailbox and set it back, then they shouldn't have any particular more problems. But also, it's a good piece of information for everybody, you know?
Right, I don't think everyone knows that, and you think, my mailbox has been there for 20 years, it's been fine. Well, it's been lucky it hasn't been hit, and probably someone's put some effort into avoiding it, but that doesn't mean that if it got hit now, that it wouldn't still be a responsibility as it would be if you just put the mailbox in five days ago.
Do you want them to, or do you want one of us to?
I think she'd come from the administration. Then he can officially speak for us.
Okay.
She, I don't even know what to do with it.
They, whoever they are.
They, them. Anything else in new business? You've had two things, you said?
Yeah, one is really, really silly, but it's something I'm learning about. So when we started our energy committee, we called it a committee, which is something that any group of people in a town can do at any time. But what we actually started was a commission, so... was a commission. So the select board said it was okay, we authorized it, they're able to hold money and all that stuff. So I just wanted to say that our energy committee, I haven't had a chance to talk to them about it, but if they wanted to change their name to commission, which is a more official term, that we have authorized that change. So they have more available and accessible to them. It means they have to do minutes and they have to have agendas and all the things that they're doing anyway.
So when did we put this in place?
It's more than that.
It does, okay. I went through the RSA today and it looked like it was, is there anything else that would change? We could put on to talk about for next, it's a week.
Let's, yeah, let's look into it and see what changes.